All this work session, Monday, June 17th, to order. Imocation given by Mr. Kenner and the pledge allegiance by Mr. Dahl.
Almighty God, we give you thanks and praise for your great goodness towards us. We ask your blessings upon these United States, the state of Alabama, Jackson County, and specifically the city of Scottsboro. Be with its elected officials this evening as they go about the public duties, lead, guide, and direct them in all that they do. These things we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number one tonight, discuss the tourism grant application from Scottsboro Dragon Boat Races fundraiser. So Ms. Carlton, oh, nope.
Can she still speak?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members for listening to our grant request. Mary Kay Carlton of Nurse One Child came to the hospital's community engagement committee and asked us if we would participate in a dragon boat race. Well, Decatur-Morgan Hospital has done this for about 10 years, a very lucrative fundraiser for them. They've raised over a million dollars for their foundation. And Nurse One Child is a worthy, worthy cause. And of course, our hospital is very integral to our community and much needed for our success. So we jumped in and said absolutely. And you cannot believe the amount of excitement that is coming with this event. We have a lot of challenges between different teams already. The Matt Butler from Gonzo Tactical is challenging Jacob Bergman, and he's doing a lot of smack talking on Facebook trying to gin up some excitement. And we have nine teams so far. We're hoping for 24, I'm hoping for 30, but we're hoping for 24. And the, each team member, there's 22 people on a boat and 20 rowers in each, there's 10 rows, so you've got a team, two on each of the 10 rows. And then in the front, there's a drummer. And the drummer keeps the cadence of the rowing going. The row lane is, the race lane is two and a half football fields. So it's not that far. We'll be between the Marina and the docks restaurant. So they'll load one of two places depending on the water level, but the actual race will be able to be viewed from that shady area and that grassy area by the docks. Dynamic Dragon Boat Races is who we've contracted with, and they have run races all around the world and help people make money for their causes all around the world. And they're really excited too, and they gave us a lot of good directions because basically I knew nothing about dragon boats. And Mary Kay has just watched a couple races. And so they've been very helpful. There will be insurance, so we won't have to worry about that. Their waivers also hold you harmless, the city harmless, so you don't have to worry about that. Let's see, what else can I think of? Mary Kay, Mary Kay did the budget. She wrote the grant for this. And we really appreciate your support and hope that you can come along with us in our grant request. And I'm going to turn it over to Mary Kay. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I have to insert a little bit of the reason that this came to the attention of our board, that we were going to need to do a fundraiser other than selling mums every year. We had been the recipients of a grant through the Jackson County Commission from some COVID recovery money, $50,000 for two years. That runs out the end of September. That's $50,000 a year. So it came to the attention of the board as we were discussing, we were going to have to do a fundraiser. Having lived in Decatur for 38 years and was very supportive of the hospital there and the foundation for various things they did, but Larry Payne, who is sort of over the Dragon Boat fundraiser, married one of my staff, my fundraising chairman when I was still there. So when we started thinking, I asked him to come and talk to my board. And they liked what they heard, but after we had a board meeting after that, a month or so later, they said, this is too big for us. You know, we're a board of 16, 17 people now. Yes, we have 35 volunteers show up every week, and they will help with anything, but it's too much. So we started talking about partners that we possibly could partner with. And I felt that the hospital was one that, you know, they're about health. Nurse One Child is about health, children's health, you know, giving them food on the weekends. So we went to them, and the board that Dawn is president of the hospital board, they said, yes, they'd like to do it. And so we have been playing a little bit of catch-up in the sense that normally it takes about nine months to organize this, and we've done it in about four months so far, three or four months. It's going to be an exciting event. And I'm going to talk a little bit about money, but one of the things I want to say to you, when I went to the last race, it was Mother's Day weekend, and we were sitting in, they have a BIP tent there, and anyway, they allowed us to go in and get something to eat. And one of the leaders that I think of of that community is Dr. Bill Sims, who's been involved a lot with this trail that's going, you know. He said, you know what this event does? It brings our community together. There are people who come together and raise money, who are in a boat, who might not necessarily be in the same boat, you know what I'm saying? But it just brings that community together. And I've always respected Dr. Sims, and he's always done what's good for communities. And he said, you need to tell, when I told him I was going to do it before the city counts on, he said, you need to tell them that. I think they'll be pleased. We anticipate, how money-wise, we anticipate around 3,000 people are going to be there that day. They say to count on two people for every person who's participating in rowing, paddling, sorry, in paddling. And so we've looked at that. We are, all the expenses that we can incur, we're spending the money locally. Every, you know, our caterer is going to be local, all the, you know, expenses, except for things that we have to get online, or, you know, the fee we have to pay the Dragon Boat people and the insurance. But if you look at the budget that was submitted, I assume Whitney was giving everyone a copy, our goal is to raise $50,000, of which we would split $25,000 to each entity. That's our goal for this year. Our goal next year is $100,000, and we each get $50,000. So from that, when I did this budget, I did it some time ago, we put our total expenses at 26,500. They're probably going to run closer to $30,000, but at that time, I was going on, you know, best I could do of estimates. And as I say, we are asking for $5,000. But you would become a silver sponsor if you look at your brochure. And for a silver sponsor, you get a boat. The city of Scottsboro would get a boat, and you can put whoever you want in that boat, but you must have eight women. And Whitney told them, and that's very important, you know, and there will be somebody there making sure. And there's, as I say, every boat races at least twice. Logistically, I thought I'd kind of explain. The top 50% of the times will move on to the finals. And that's how, and then depending on how many boats we have, there may be A category, like the top four times, B category, so we give awards in each of those categories. And then there's a big, or a nice trophy, I should say, that will be presented to the overall winner. Now, I have to tell you, you know, I could talk forever, and I'll try to make this short again. The, when Gina and I went, the, a team that has won two years in a row is a State Farm Insurance agent. But I'm telling you that not all those people that were in his boat worked for him. He went out and he's recruited people. It doesn't have to be people. You can recruit whoever you want in your boat. The team that came in second, and this is what I was real kind of proud of, was Decatur High School Seniors, you know, seniors, but they, the name of their team was Sen Oars. And they came in second with 48 boats racing, 48 teams racing. And my three children graduated from school there, you know, and I thought that was pretty cool that, you know, they competed amongst all these companies and all of that. But it is a fun event. It's going to be great for the city. It's going to be, have an economic impact. The people that are coming to do it, the Hampton Inn is going to be our travel sponsor. But, you know, people will be coming, you know, family to come to see people race. There are going to be people who want to eat supper. It'll end up around two or three o'clock, and they're going to want to go. Our caterers, we're going to be probably spending over a couple thousand dollars for the caterer because the presenting sponsor gets 75 people. They get their lunch provided. So, you know, we're going to have a really good impact and at the same time, building our community together. Anybody have any questions?
Anyone have any questions, Mary Kay, on this?
Yeah, Mr. President, I got a couple. Dawn, I'm assuming we're going to have a team?
Yes.
Are the hospitals going to have a team?
Yes.
Are we recruiting other area hospitals to have teams as well?
Well, Decatur can't have a team, but we have, as Marshall County and also Redstone, I heard Redstone Federal Credit Union.
Federal Credit Union.
They're all ready.
We have nine teams committed so far, one or two is the hospital, but Redstone is recruiting some of their rowing members from Marshall County too. Marshall County had an event a few years ago, and it is quite a bit of work, so they have not had one.
It was for Habitat for Humanity. They had 15 teams, and they made about $50,000. And, but we have banks, other banks that probably are going to be participating. I've been out to Harbors and High Country and, you know, making the rounds, making the rounds, and we know.
Tell me about your church.
Yeah, all my church that I go to, they've already got their T-shirts designed and their logo. It's called the Holy Rowers. And, you know, anyway, but we have one county, and I just can't even say anymore, it's an entity in the county, and they won't, they are all in, but they want their logo designed and their name before, they don't want anybody stealing their. I mean, it's, you know, so we, we're pretty comfortable we're going to have at least 20, but, you know, we're hoping for 24. The insurance was based on 20 boats, so if we have more than 20, it's $120 per, you know.
You saying that about insurance, so are they required to wear a life jacket during this event?
Oh, yeah. They, we were just talking to our photographer that's going to take the pictures, and we get the team picture done first, and then they put their life jackets on. And they line up, and the women usually are in the front, and there's the drummer, have to have a drummer. And they also have to, there's a contest for the, you'll see a picture in there with paddles. There's a contest for the best outfit of the drummer. And then the drummers have to dance. Now, they can be male or female. I am not, but they have a dance-off. There's some fun things going. It really is, you know. And, you know, we, like I say, it's, we're trying to spend all our money here locally other than things like insurance and the dragon boat, but they're out in Knoxville.
So the life jackets are supplied, though? People won't? Okay.
They supply, somebody called the other day and said, do they supply the boats? We said, oh, yeah, we wouldn't do that.
We're running a line at home.
Yes.
They supply the life jackets.
Yeah, they supply the life jackets.
You can't wear your own, because those are.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, several of our doctors that are going to do the hospital are also in our teams. I just have a firm commitment.
Good.
There is going to be a lot of hospital participation.
Okay. Good.
We got a call on one that Nancy Hodges was going to go visit, and he said, I don't need a visit, just bring me the forum. And it's a doctor in town. And so he is one of our Nurse One Child supporters too, so, any other questions?
I have a couple, just, it may be on here somewhere, but I don't, what time does it start?
8:30.
Okay. I didn't see it on there, but it may be on there somewhere.
8:30, and that's the opening ceremony. We're in the search for a dragon costume.
Another question, can you see it from the amphitheater? Because I'm not exactly sure.
Well, Gina.
Not the amphitheater, in front of docks, that place here, there's a fixed dock there. And the Dragon Boat guy that will be here, they've got loaded boats, he recommended we use that fixed dock, but then we talked to, what's the guy's name? Goosebumps?
Oh, he had a good.
Low.
Yeah.
Low, yeah, Low was afraid, sometimes the water, they dropped the water. So we'll decide on Friday night or Thursday night before the event, we'll know the water level. If the water's too low, he said it would be unsafe to load it off of that fixed dock. But Goosebumps has a floating dock, which you'll, which will just fine, so you'll more paddle around from there.
And also the weeds, if the weeds are bad down there, you know.
I was going to ask about the ill grass right now.
Yeah, we have a backup.
Okay.
We're trying to, you know, kind of fundraising was my specialty when I worked, and I feel like I'm back to working.
It sounds like fun. I'm glad y'all are bringing this here. Yeah.
Another cool thing that we were mentioning was you can watch it from the water too. And Jackson County Rescue will be monitoring the lanes and know if boats are getting into the lanes, and the company sets that up. But the rescue group said that they will monitor, but people can sit in their boats and watch the race also. You can watch the water.
They can't cross the line there.
And that sounds like a most fun.
We had several of the hospital board members and several of our board members go to the Decatur one and, you know, see it on site.
All right, anyone else have any questions? All right, no questions. We'll move back to next week's meeting then. Thank you all.
Thank you all so much.
All right, number two, discuss additional budget amendment to repair landfill off-road truck. Mr. Ledwell.
Two and three, that's the one we're having. Because of two, we got a period also. When we, we got the estimate, we were, we got a figure of 48,2, when they, of course, get inside of one of these things, and this is an off-road haul truck, and we got inside of it, there were some additional things that had to be finished. It made the price a bit different than what the estimate was. The final that we need to prove alone tonight, the additional is maybe $758. And number two, that was some home names that was a couple of years that they didn't plan on having food with, and they had it where they had it.
All right. Anyone have any questions on this repair? No questions, we'll move back to next week's meeting. You can go ahead and explain number three.
Number three is the rental of the truck, the off-road haul truck. We got it ran for one month because we were assured that one month would affect the repair. But when the additional things items came about on the repair, it put us over into the next month. So we ended up having to keep that truck for a whole nother month. And this part here is just for one more month. It started out as a two-month rental when it was first presented to you, but we brought it back down to one because they said they thought that could do it. Of course, this is what happens. It wasn't, they wasn't able to do it, so the $10,250 is another month's rental for the off-road haul truck.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on that? No questions, we'll move back to next week's meeting. Thank you. And number four, Liberty Learning Foundation presentation. Ms. Bubba.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council for having me tonight. I don't know if I can be as exciting as the boat racing, that sounds like a lot of fun, but this is a program that is also fun in your community. I'm with a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, Liberty Learning Foundation, based out of Huntsville. We are doing a civics and character-based education program in the city schools here in Scottsboro. We're also in the Jackson County system, but we're also in 48 counties throughout the state. So we've been doing this for a while. We're very tried and true what we do. I've given you our annual report, you can kind of look at it, and it identifies the number of school systems. The number of students last year was about 55,000, will be up to around 58,000 this year. And just in your city system, we are providing the program to 370 students. So we do it for the fifth grade here, and then we do the financial literacy component of the seventh grade. And so what we do is very, like she said, we're bringing the community together by teaching these kids to belong to their community at a young age, to become engaged, to know how important it is to be a super citizen. That's what we graduate them as, a super citizen. So we're teaching them civics lessons, and we're providing all the materials and resources to their teachers. We hand that to them in a kit from our education team. That will either happen this, probably this summer, because they are going to kick off in August. So the teachers will be prepared, ready, easy-to-use materials to teach them 10 to 12 weeks of civics lessons. A lot of character building. We know that our children these days need to learn what it is to be loyal and accountable and responsible. We want them to take care of themselves, have pride in themselves and their community. So we do all of that through lessons, but then we have a really fun part of the program where they nominate somebody in the city here or in their area, community, that they feel has given to them in a positive way, and so we want them to give back. We let them learn financial literacy by letting them create something they can earn money, deposit it in a fictitious account, and then they're going to purchase the gift that they give this hero. They're going to bring them in at our celebration event, put them up on stage, and you'll see a youngster up there just reading their bio about why they selected them and then giving them their gift. So there's a lot of moving parts to it, but they learn so much, and it's something that's very needed in our world today. So we're drilling it down to each community, and it's my job, of course, to find local sponsors. You know, it's a great program, we provide it free to the schools, but there is a cost to it. On your page, the little handout that's got the different levels of programs, if you'll see on the back, it lets you know that we're doing the 370 students, and it takes $13,000 to put this on. I do have a number of year-after-year sponsors that, that want to give to this. I would love to see you guys on there as well, because I think it's very important if we're teaching the children to belong to the community, that the elected officials are there and kind of supporting what they're learning. We always invite you to our events, and again, I have the dates for that, I'll give that to you in a second. I would love for you to come, see what we're all about. The kickoff event is a very fun time. You'll get to see our Libby Liberty up on stage. She does a 45-minute monologue of who she is, our Statue of Liberty, why she's here, and what she represents. That's a fun time. And that kicks the program off for 10 to 12 weeks. We won't see the kids, they'll be with their teachers, and they would like for you to come back and see them graduate as a super citizen. It's really important, I think, for them to see who their sponsors are, and I would love for you guys to be on board. It's about $900 for a classroom. I don't really ever ask for a certain amount, because I feel like that's up to you, but we do have a great need. I've about raised or got pledges for about half of that this year. So there's still several classrooms that we need funding for, but it doesn't stop that. After this year, we will be trying to expand, and a lot of times, we don't span too fast because we don't have the funding. So we would like to see all levels here. And of course, Senator Livingston helped bring this here in the very beginning, and he is determined that we did the high school program here, which is very intense. We only have two in the entire state, Dothen and Coleman. And we would love to see Scottsboro City do that. They will actually start in ninth grade, and we'll pick up a grade every year until we get the ninth graders to the 12th grade, so then we'll have all four. And as you can see, your size, classrooms are going to be probably 175, 200 students each time we pick that up. So it's going to be quite the need for expense, but if you guys can help me get that funding over the next, I don't know, maybe two school seasons, I think you'd be very, very proud of what we do. We teach a lot of financial literacy, and it's amazing how these kids know nothing about financial literacy, even as a ninth grader. And we're going ahead and starting that then, and letting them do citizen actions so that, you know, they'll be coming involved in some of these meetings, they'll show up here, and they'll put their name down and maybe speak at a meeting, and they'll get little citizen actions for that. So the child who ends up with most actions from ninth grade to 12th grade will end up with some grant money. We provide that for them. We don't want it to be the most scholastic or the most athletic, we want it to be the American that they are and what they've learned by being a good citizen. So again, it's just an all-good-feeling program that everybody needs, and we're trying to hit all counties. We're getting closer. We're about 19 away, I guess. So if you guys can help me with your city system here, I think that you'd be very proud of what we do. If you've never seen an event or never heard of it, you just have to come. The first kickoff will be August the 21st at 1:00 at Collins Intermediate, and then they will culminate the program with that celebration, and that's November the 19th at 1:00. So it's roughly 45 minutes to an hour's time. We congregate all the kids there at that one auditorium, I believe it is, and they have a really fun time with that kickoff. You have to see that, because you want to see Libby in person, and then try to come back and see who they've nominated as their hero at the culmination of the program. So if you can do one classroom, 10 classrooms, we'd be glad to have anything that we can get. And then also, my job is to network in your community. If you know of anybody that might want to jump on our mission, just send me an email. I've got it at the bottom of either one of these pages, and I'll be happy to meet with them at any time. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I've got a comment, Mr. President, if I could. I have been to, I think, these, the last three years, the events at the different schools, and I can tell you, it is a very worthwhile program. The kids really get into this, and it's very worthwhile.
It's fun to watch them engage in learning something, even though, you know, school's not always fun. This is fun. And so we've brought in arts, bringing Libby, and then we let them interact during the program. And then, of course, their lessons, they're very busy doing things, you know, learning about voting and the veterans and military and all of that while learning good character traits. We want them to be good people, hopefully good workers. So, you know, we're trying to drill it down as to what it truly means. So I think we're doing a good job, and we're on board to keep expanding here, so if you can help us, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll put that on next week's meeting also. That'll conclude the meeting tonight. That all spoke tonight, so there's no other delegations. We'll go to reports. Mayor?
I don't have anything tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Asher?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Ms. Frederick?
I just wanted to say I appreciate everybody that came out tonight. Good crowd. That's all, Ms. Frederick.
Thank you. Do a reminder, garbage schedule this week for city of Scottsboro, Wednesday's the only day going to be affected, but that garbage will move up to Tuesday. So if you're on a Wednesday pickup, get your garbage out the day early. Get it out tomorrow, matter of fact. So make sure I announce that. I hate getting those calls. So anyways, I appreciate everyone coming out. We'll have a meeting next Monday. You're adjourned. Your adjourn.